All right, this is the planning board meeting for June 2nd, 2021. Begin as we do with all the online meetings with a roll call. Alden Clark.
Here.
Leif Delil is absent. Anne Gardner. Liam McGovern. Not here yet. Rick Tainter.
Here.
MJ Verde.
Here.
Don Walters is absent. Bonnie Sontag is here, as is our note taker, Linda Guthrie, Planning Director Andy Port, and zoning administrator Jennifer Blancher. I'll go through our agenda, which is brief. First will be the joint public hearing with the Planning and Development Committee and the Committee of the Whole. Then there will be a request for a minor modification at One Boston Way. We will have approval of minutes, discuss any issues we need to under planning updates and other updates from the Chair or the Planning Director. And that is the agenda for the Planning Board. Hand it over to Counselor Shan.
All right, thank you, Chair Sontag. So this is Heather Shan, opening the Planning and Development Committee meeting for June the 2nd, taking a roll call. I know Counselor Agarwal is absent, so Counselor Wallace.
Here.
All right, I would declare our meeting open as well. So we are here to discuss ordinance 076. And I will defer to Director Port and zoning Minister Blancher to take it from here.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Chair Sontag. I'm actually going to change the view right now to a presentation, just a couple of slides to summarize the ordinance amendment. It's actually 17 pages, so out of respect for everyone's time, I put together a couple of slides to summarize the substance. And obviously, this is just a brief overview. We're here to answer any questions you might have. And obviously, we understand if there's any comments or concerns, we would ask for, you know, a continuation to make any tweaks. So here is just an overview of the so-called mini reform. That's the update to the zoning ordinance, part one. So just an overview of context for everybody. In the preamble section of this ordinance, and I should clarify, by the way, this particular package was put together by myself, the zoning administrator, Jennifer Blancher, who's here this evening, and Council President, Counselor Agarwal, who is unfortunately not here this evening. But we worked together to put together a package of what we feel are necessary updates to language in the ordinance to address a number of issues and outdated provisions. So as context, in the preamble of the amendment itself is a summary there of the comprehensive rewrite project that we started a few years back. The original effort and goal was to rewrite the entire zoning ordinance, give or take a few areas of particular debate, like Waterfront West, but to update the entire ordinance, including its structure. That proved to be a monumental task because there's a lot of different ties in the ordinance. So if you work on one section, there's a cross-reference to another. And that conversation can go on quite a while before you're able to get to an ordinance that folks can agree on. So what we have is deliverables from that particular project that are helpful to us, but we need to integrate into the current structure of the ordinance. It was agreed that we would stick, since that time, we've agreed that we would stick with the original structure and organization of the ordinance and focus on the substance. So what we are doing here is updating a package of that. And what we'd like to do going forward this year, and then obviously moving beyond that even, is to continue updating the ordinance in chunks. The comprehensive update is therefore, and in part in this particular package, work that came from the zoning advisory committee and some recommendations on that end, as well as the consulting community opportunities group firm that worked with us. So the zoning administrator position and input is very important here. Jennifer has been in this position for a couple of years. She has been needing to interpret and apply the ordinances, making sure that folks are getting the right permits and approvals and looking at enforcement. And so she has been helpful here in pointing out where there's issues of clarification that are needed, better interpretation or application, language that we can put in there. So we focused on that in this particular package as well because that's been a big portion of her efforts in the time that she's been here because that's a primary role for that position. So the mini reform, part one, is essentially a 17-page amendment to the ordinance. I've put in the presentation here just the ordinance number on the council docket. And again, it's a combination of work between three particular folks listed there. The next steps for us are to go on to additional chapters and sections in so-called manageable packages. One of the ones that I would like to focus on in the very next package is the administration section, which was originally written for the zoning board of appeals only. And so it needs to be updated to address some things, you know, since that time, including the planning board better. The next slide here is just, and again, I'll post this presentation of the website tomorrow for everyone with the amendment. But this is just a summary of the substantive changes, really. And I thought that'd be helpful for everybody to organize, you know, how things are in there. So generally speaking, you have these one through seven items. The first one is housekeeping and non-substantive updates. For our goal with this was to clarify language, particular definitions that come up often or there's a question about, clarify terms, make sure that it's very clear what the submission requirements are for applications. In the agricultural conservation district, and I'll show the zoning map in just a second, that's a substantial area of the city. And actually, let me just show the map for just a brief moment. This is the zoning map for the city. And what you'll see in the green there is the agricultural conservation zoning district. So there's a pretty good area in the city that is owned as such. And much of that is, you know, state park or city parks, open space that's been preserved, and agricultural lands. And so there's a, the city has obviously a long-term interest in preserving those areas. And a couple of years back, a zoning amendment was made to increase the lot size requirements within that district so that folks would have to maintain large lot sizes if they were to subdivide in the future to protect the city's interests. And this language that's proposed here is to clarify why that was done in the first place, which is again, to preserve viable farmland and obviously open space areas. So this clarifies the, what I would describe as the defensible rationale for the large lot zoning requirement in the context of what might be challenges or disputes from developers who are not satisfied with the type of density that they can get in those areas. Some of that, by the way, of those areas around the city's water supply. So there's good reason for us to want to protect these areas. Yard, number three in the list is the yard height and setback requirements. So we've clarified some of those elements in particular because those are issues that come up quite a bit. We have a lot of non-conforming lots and structures in the city due to its age, the history of this community. So because of that, there are oftentimes plans that have to be reviewed to make sure that yard setbacks and height requirements and things are met. And therefore, having clear language is very important. Administrative roles, we've updated some language for the zoning administrator and the building commissioner, really housekeeping, I think, on that one, really. But just to clarify, the zoning administrator, again, is a relatively new position for the city, but one that is essential because it was really not possible for the building commissioner to monitor both enforcement of the zoning ordinance and all the permits that come underneath that, as well as the billing code throughout the city. So having a position in this office that's able to oversee the ordinance, its enforcement, directing folks to the right permits, and helping along those lines is very important to the city. The number five is the consistency with the zoning act. So we made a couple of adjustments here to be consistent with Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 40A, which is the zoning act. And we, one of the language changes is, this is consistent with the state law, which supersedes that proposed zoning changes can come from various different parties. That is different than, as the council knows, the expectation that council orders are sponsored for acceptance on the council docket. Under state law, various different parties can specifically recommend changes in zoning, and they're called out there. So we're just clarifying that. There's a three-year permit allowance for special permits, and we've done that adjustment from two years to three years in our own ordinance to match that. And that's, again, that's just an outdated provision in our ordinance. We have deleted some outdated sections of the ordinance. So this is, the bill out in these districts are complete. So this is the Federal Street Overlay District and the Toll Complex Redevelopment Overlay District. Both of those overlay districts were adopted to allow a specific type of development to happen in a very important area of the city, for one reason or another. And those projects have since been completed. And so at this point, there's not a need for the structure of that particular section of the ordinance and the provisions in there. The folks or the developers who have that particular property are able to proceed. Underneath the permits that have already been issued to maintain those uses, to modify them underneath the provisions there, and in any event, to make adjustments as non-conformities if need be. So there really is not a need for that whole section and several pages to be devoted to an ordinance that's no longer going to be used for permitting. And so that also frees up the section for other sections we might be adding. For instance, the council had talked in recent time about short-term rental units. That's a section, for instance, that could open up for a provision like that. The other thing that helps to do is, because the ordinance is a very long document, and for folks who, for the layperson to read through that, like the document, and understand all the elements and how they relate to each other, having extra chapters in there that are outdated and may not apply to anything is a little confusing. So we're preventing confusion as well. So that is, that is what that is about. We do have a number of overlay districts that have been added throughout the years, typically towards the end of the ordinance. You see a number, the chapter number added based on the overlay districts for special provisions. Number seven is the DOD or Downtown Overlay District and Demolition Control Overlay District updates. And just as a reminder for everybody, the downtown overlay district is essentially a, an overlay district of the downtown intended to protect the historic character, massing and sizing and so forth of the downtown. And so it's a gap, it's filling a gap that the city has had. The redevelopment authority, obviously, in prior decades, had spent time renovating downtown businesses and buildings. And there are no, there weren't any protections or not sufficient protections for the downtown when their controls expired, if you will. So this ordinance was put in place to better protect the downtown, specifically as an area of particular concern to the city, given its history and importance. So we are clarifying some language in that section of the ordinance. The demolition control overlay district is the remainder outside of the downtown overlay district of the entire National Register Historic District. So if you look at the boundaries of the outside of the D-Cod, our demolition control overlay district, that's the National Register Historic District. And that area is intended to really prevent, you know, substantial demolition of historic structures. The, what we've done here is to clarify some language. We have specifically called out to allow operable windows. This is for the downtown overlay district in particular. And that's an issue that's come up of late in a couple of different properties or storefronts along the downtown. And structures may be moved. So there's a provision for the planning board to allow, by special permit, the moving of a historic structure in appropriate circumstances. So those are some of the substantive changes in the ordinance. And then again, we're here to answer any questions further. I did show the zoning map just a moment ago. I just wanted to speak to a couple of pieces that may appear more substantive as folks are reading through the ordinance, but it's important to note here, I want to call out this, that for the downtown overlay district and the operable windows component, there's a couple of things to note here. So this slide and the next one, I think, might be of interest because it pertained to these relatively new ordinances, the downtown overlay district and the demolition control overlay district. So the current language in the downtown overlay district explicitly prohibits changes to the mode of operation of windows. And so the proposed language here in this package, which obviously is up for consideration by the council, would allow that to be possible by special permit. So typical as other reviews that the planning board would do in the downtown overlay district, someone could propose to make an operable window. The board would obviously have to review that in context and make their determination. But that would, it would at least allow the option for the board to look at that. Whereas the current ordinance does not allow that. One would need to apply for variance. And in fact, we have a variance application for one storefront right now to do that. Historic windows, and just to be clear here, the proposed ordinance amendment allows one to get to an operable window if the board approves that in an appropriate context. And I should note here that the Historic Commission is required to provide advisory opinions to the planning board in all instances so that they have the benefit of that expertise when they make a decision. The historic windows must still be preserved or repaired, if possible, prior to their eligibility for replacement. And I just wanted to note that because there are a few instances downtown, there's obviously a number of historic structures we have downtown and storefronts. And so just to note, to be clear here, while the planning board could grant a special permit for an operable window, one would first have to demonstrate that those windows cannot be restored, essentially, if they're historic, that they could not be restored before essentially wholesale replacing those windows. So that is just an example right there. And I show just at the bottom images there. From the slide before was the existing sort of condition. This is for the 17 to 21 State Street project. What has been proposed is a storefront with operable windows. And so the, that's just an example of the change of mode of operation. So these are panel windows today, and these are the operable windows in the scenario that was proposed. So that's an example of an operable window. The other point I wanted to highlight here was just that in the demolition control overlay district, we are defining demolition better, a little bit better in terms of the language of the ordinance. And that goes to the triggers themselves, the thresholds, and the way that they're calculated, with how demolition is calculated. And that's important, just speaking for myself, I think it's important that the layperson is able to understand how the ordinance works and that they don't necessarily need an attorney to interpret that and understand how the regulations might apply. So I note that because we had proposed language here that codifies existing interpretation and application of the ordinance. And I realize that for anybody who's reading the package might have questions about that particular section because there's an additional, roughly a paragraph being added there to clarify some things. This largely arose out of two cases recently that were before boards for appeals or permits and so forth. One of them, I just wanted to stop and pause to note those because it provides some good context for why there is language in this amendment to this particular section. And the reason for that is because the ordinance functions in a certain way today and was clarified by our own legal counsel, Koppelman Page, KP Law. And they provided some guidance in two particular instances, in fact, as we were dealing with these situations. And what we're proposing here actually codifies that, you know, application and interpretation of the ordinance, what we felt, Jennifer and I in particular, I would say, at least speaking for myself, that we felt that we needed to clarify better in the language of the ordinance. So it was very obvious to folks how that worked. And so the Hancock Street application, I'll speak to in just a second, and the Harrison Street project, which is the images you're seeing below there, led to some disputes and required, or called for, I think, we thought here, some better clarification of the ordinance as well for everybody to know what the rules are and how they apply. So KP Law gave an opinion. That opinion is relative to the ordinance today, not as it applies to the amendment. Their opinion is that this is how the ordinance works, and I'll speak to that in a second, irrespective of the clarifying amendment. So the clarifying amendment is meant to make that clearer in the ordinance itself. In the case of 12 to 14 Harrison Street, which is the two images you're seeing below, in this instance, and just for context, the zoning board of appeals had already approved for this structure, which was essentially being demolished. The, they actually approved originally a new exterior for the building. And this is not in any way taking judgment for, you know, any decisions of the board or otherwise. But just for context with the regulatory process, the board had already approved an exterior of the building here, the same mass, I think, or an increase in the height of the roof and some deck structure at the back and so forth. And so the applicant and the property owner had permission to do that. And that, I note that because that particular project included new siding, new windows, and some elevation of the height of the roof, as I recall, and some other changes. And so ostensibly, what the public was seeing was all going to be different. And what this, this was the first instance is, I think, we saw where there was really a dispute over the fact that some other elements of that exterior wall are protected as well. And so the original framing is protected. And you can see here, what they were doing was replacing some of the original framing with new studs. And obviously, you know, potentially for structural reasons, but the ordinance requires those things to be looked at by the zoning board of appeals if someone wants to do that in certain demolition instances when thresholds are triggered, and have that reviewed on to see if those can be preserved before they are, you know, essentially demolished. So in this instance, a fair amount of the exterior was basically all being replaced with this, these studs, and cease and desist order was issued. And there was an appeal and some permitting that followed on that to resolve that issue, if you will. But what that pointed out was, I think the important piece of this is it points out that there are, I would say, three elements that are preserved by the ordinance or protected by the ordinance in one way or another. And Jennifer may want to weigh into this as well, if you'd like. But generally speaking, we're talking about the siding, and there are some provisions about what can be done with siding to, you know, replace that, of course, is allowed as a right. But deciding, the sheathing, as you can see in the photograph on the left, and then the framing itself underneath is protected to a degree, depending on the context, the threshold that's triggered, of course, and board review, there, those things can be protected. So that's just for context. And again, that's the existing ordinance. That's not the, the amendment is really codifying language that clarifies that a little better for folks. The, and again, that's, the policy questions on that are for the council and the planning board to discuss, if there's any debate about that. The proposed language codifies the existing interpretation, again, on enveloping a historic structure. So in the instance that I'm showing here, this is a recent application we had on Hancock Street. The image on the right side is showing a footprint or layout of the building footprint on the site. And this is in red, what you're seeing is the outline of a historic structure. I've just called that out so you can clearly see where that is. And the rest of the structure that's being proposed there would surround that, essentially, on two sides there. And there was some debate there at that point as to whether or not that was triggering the threshold of demolition, in this case of exterior walls. And the essence there was that if you're going to envelope a historic structure, that can be considered in the calculations of destruction of its exterior walls, which by conversion to an interior wall is its demolition. So that was, essentially KP Law helped to clarify how that situation should be treated in terms of application of the ordinance. And this language helps to better clarify that, again, that that is how the ordinance operates so everybody can read the ordinance and understand clearly. The other thing I just wanted to show here was a, briefly, is a diagram. Jennifer had worked on this diagram to help to show folks in an illustrative perspective. And this is something else that's called out in the ordinance to make it clear that the zoning administrator can issue these diagrams to clarify for folks, for the layperson even better, what might be calculated as demolition and what might not be. And again, I'm happy to go back to this slide. But for instance, you see in these diagrams here whether or not someone's actually adding an addition. You can add an addition on a single side, as you see in the diagram on the left. If you're adding more than one addition, there's a question there. You have to look at the calculation and determine whether or not it's, you know, 25% or more of that exterior of the structure. But basically, there are certain things that are allowed, and there are certain things that might be subject to review and be calculated for surface area on those facades in terms of figuring out whether they're subject to review or triggering so-called demolition. So that's what, those are those diagrams are for. And they may be modified over time if regulations change for any reason. The last slide I have is just to provide a little context again, as a sort of wrap-up of the summary. I would ask, and this is just for our office and the staff as we work on this amendment and any adjustments that you might feel are appropriate. And again, we hope the council and planning board recommend adoption of most of this in substance, is if you could provide feedback on minor language edits and editorial edits, largely those can be emailed to myself, as planning director, as only administrator, Jennifer Blancher, and the council president. Because we've worked on this package together, we can take a look at those and try to integrate and address those, all those concerns. Those are, again, those are largely, I'm guessing, non-substantive issues or language questions or concerns. If there's any substantive issues or concerns, those are ones, obviously, it'd be great to hear comments on now. And again, if you want to email us any of your thoughts, you know, in between meetings, of course. We're, you know, outside of these particular meetings, so we can take those into account. But those are, those are really important to us. The language things, obviously, can be worked out for the most part. Generally speaking, those are often worked out, but the substantive issues are good for us to know so we can figure out where there's concerns, if any. And then the other thing I would remind everybody is just to think about next steps. So I would generally expect at this point, because we have received some feedback from a few folks, individuals on the planning board, for instance, about the language in the ordinance, we'll be taking a look at those as well. So I wasn't pausing on those tonight. But we plan on coming back with a revised, updated draft to address those issues and, of course, any other substantive things that are brought up tonight or provided to us. So we intend to distribute that and post that to the website when we're ready, obviously following tonight and any other feedback we get. And then we would ask for our recommendation of the council in one form or another for adoption of the amendment. The amendment has amended in committee. So whenever you're at that point, whether that's tonight or some other future point, recommend approval to the council so that the first package of updates to our ordinance can be brought forward. And the other thing I would suggest is if there is a continuation of tonight's hearing or deliberations, that it be to a date certain and allow a few weeks out so that Jennifer and I, working with Counselor Agarwal, can make a few tweaks. With that, I would turn it back to the chairs.
Chair Sontag, would you like to open it up to public comment?
Yes, I think that's a good idea. They will have the full range of thoughts before we comment from the board and from the council.
Okay, great. Chairs, did you want me to handle that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So folks, if you're in the audience, you want to use Zoom's raise hand feature, should be at the bottom of your screen, you can hit that button, and it'll let us know you'd like to speak. And then we'll light on mute yourself and address the board or the committee. First person we have is Ken Swanton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi there. I'm a member of the zoning board of appeals. We have not discussed this proposed mini reform as a board, but I did review, I have some thoughts on it, which I've reviewed with our chair, and I'd like to share them with you. They do, they're my thoughts, they do not represent the zoning board of appeals, but they're my thoughts. In general, I strongly support the proposed changes. I'm very happy you guys are doing this. And particularly, three areas stand out to me as ones that are really nice to see. The first one is Section 6F on setbacks. You know, for a long time, the zoning board of appeals interpreted the ordinance to say that sheds and garages had to be six feet off a property line. But in the last year, there's been some confusion as to whether the ordinance really says that. And so I'm really happy to see that that confusion is cleared up and we get back to what we thought, which is that these things have to be six feet off a property line unless you go for variance. The second area that I was really happy to see was in the DOD, Section 27. I think Andy just spoke to that, showing the sign at Brine. You know, I see the DOD is very critical in protecting the historic downtown, but it should not force applicants to go to both the planning board for variance, if you want to open windows, and, I'm sorry, to the ZBA for variance for open windows and to the planning board for everything else to do with the storefront. We have a very well-publicized example of this right now in front of us with Brine, as Andy showed the pictures of. We had 130 people in that hearing on our Zoom meeting, and the meeting went till after midnight. It was a long stretch there. The proposed change would essentially get the ZBA out of this business so they could just focus on the planning board, which I think is highly appropriate. I mean, it's gotten to the point where I just learned today that at our hearing next week, the applicant wants us to play the role of the planning board so they don't have to go to the planning board and rule on everything in the DOD despite the fact we've never done it before, have no knowledge of it, aren't expert in it, and this is one of the most controversial decisions of the year. So please make this change and get us out of this loop. Finally, the third thing I was really happy to see, Andy also touched on, on Section 28 on the D-Cod. You know, as housing values skyrocket in Newburyport, developers are coming to us with some very creative and challenging applications to demolish parts of buildings. And I thought it was really nice to see the tweaks that are in this thing, including counting demolitions cumulatively over time, including the window and door shape changes, Andy showed a picture on that, and including walls being swallowed up. And he showed a little house that, it was just last month, somebody proposed a giant, giant building around it. And literally, you couldn't find the house anymore when it was built. I don't think that was the intent of the D-Cod bylaw. So very glad to see all those changes. So in summary, I think there's a lot of good tweaks in here, and I hope you pass it. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Swan, I should know this, but what is your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, 10 Tremont Street.
Thank you very much.
Gosh, I'm sorry. I listened to all the applicants have to put their address in, and I forget to give mine. I'm sorry.
No worries.
Thank you, Ken, for your comments. I do not see any other raised hands at this time. If there are any other speakers or folks in the audience who'd like to address the board or the committee? Not seeing any takers.
Okay. All right. Chair Sontag, I know we've had written testimony, specifically, some came in from Counselor Z tonight. Is this something that you would like to start discussing? How would you like to proceed here?
I don't think it makes any sense unless he's in attendance. So that, if for no other reason, is a good reason to continue this hearing. He has several substantive points in there, and I think it would be better if we had the discussion with him present.
All right.
I should also say that the planning board has spent some time with Director Port on this. So he has our comments, but I just want to make sure that nothing else has come up since then, that P But I just want to make sure that nothing else has come up since then that people would like to put forward now. So if it would be all right with you, I'd like to ask for comments from the planning board members. Would that be okay?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I see Rick with your hand up. You want to get us started?
Thank you. I did provide a lot of detailed comments a few weeks ago, and I apologize that I wasn't able to make the last planning board meeting at which this was discussed. I have a few kind of higher level comments that I'd just like to make. And some of these are things that have occurred to me since since the last time we discussed this. The first one is on page five, I think, of the, yes, page five, bottom of page five. There's a section six about projections of structures, fences and walls into required setbacks. And there are a couple of things here that I, it's really some wordsmithing to make the intent clear that I think would be helpful. The first thing is the use of the word project, because to me, project into a setback implies that you're projecting out from something that's outside the setback. You know, so so it's like a porch projecting from a house into a setback. And I think this really applies to things that are entirely within the setback. So I think a better word there would be helpful. And then the other, the other part of this that I think is might be challenging to us in the future is the description of height above existing grade. When you look at the definition of building height, it's the building is the height above average grade and presumably average finished grade. So the what the definition, what the meaning of existing in is in this context could be could be read different ways. For example, somebody could raise a berm at the front of their property and put a fence on top of it. And that would be the existing grade that is on top of. So I just encourage the writers to look at those two sections and just try to get rid of any ambiguity. The next one is on page seven, and this is really a policy question that I did raise before, and I just wanted to raise it again. This basically allows the zoning standards to be waived by the city engineer with the advice of the zoning administrator. And I feel that that opens up some problems and that I think it's, you know, certainly the city engineer should be involved. But I believe that as a policy matter, only the zoning administrator should be involved in waiving zoning standards. So I would suggest that this be on the written approval of the zoning administrator with the advice of the, with the advice of the or consultation of the city engineer. The next one is, I believe, on page 10. Let me just get there. Yes, top of page 10. And this, I think that we need to talk about what impact this, the discussion about waivers and completion of the application would have on the planning boards process. It's it seems to be that all waivers have to be submitted in advance. It doesn't leave open the ability for waivers that are identified later in the process as part of the review by the planning board to be considered. So I would just take another look at that so that we aren't handcuffing ourselves in giving flexibility to applicants. On page 11, at the very top of the page, it gives the city council, and I guess this is an existing situation, but it gives the city council a role in determining whether expert consultants are required in terms of certain uses. And I guess I would question that, whether that makes sense and whether that, again, could be streamlined by, you know, not making somebody go from the planning board to the city council and back to the planning board, but streamline it at the planning board level so the planning board can make that decision. On page 12, there's a new introductory line saying except as otherwise provided under chapter 48 of the general laws. And this, this is unusual situation where our zoning ordinance, and I understand this is here for historic reasons, but our zoning ordinance simply quotes the state law for a number of paragraphs over a page worth of paragraphs about how zoning ordinances are adopted. It really has no effect at all, including this in the zoning ordinance, because we have to follow this anyway under state law. But the what's happened is, as everyone knows, there's there are new amendments to 48 that changed the provisions, reducing the vote from a two-thirds to 50%. And so that this one phrase at the top, except as otherwise provided, is a not very clear way to say, you know, except obviously where where this whole section of zoning or regulatory changes or statutory changes has been adopted by the state, reducing the thresholds, a whole variety of thresholds that the, it's not, it seemed, this looks like it's making it clear what the process is, but it's very much unclear and you have to go back to state law, which is what most communities do is defer to state law rather than quoting all the state law. So I guess this particular provision here may need to be looked at a little bit further. And in particular, the state law also changes the protest, the thresholds for protest provisions for for housing changes. And I'm not really sure that the except as otherwise provided here also takes care of the protest petitions. I think that the it just talks about the two-thirds vote and doesn't talk about the increase in the threshold for protest petitions. Two more. The the next one is the one that Andy was talking about about windows in the downtown. And I appreciate the issues. This is on page 15, I believe. Yes, and and Andy, you mentioned that the that changes in the modes of operation cannot happen unless it is proven that the windows can't be saved, or at least that's what I understood you to say. And I just don't see that in this in this provision. I see it as this provision is much wider open, saying that regardless of anything else previous in the paragraph, the planning board can approve changes in the mode of operation. So if if the intent is to be as strict as you seem to say it was, I think that should be stated in this in this section so that it's so that it's nobody comes in and says, well, planning board says we can do this. And then we have to say, well, no, the intent was that it can only be done if the windows can't be saved. And I don't have a position one way or another on that, whether whether we want to be that strict or not. I just think we should be, we should be clear about it. And then the final item is at the very end, where there's a new provision to ensure compliance. And it says that the zoning administrator, building commissioner and or zoning Board of Appeals may require a clear properly scaled drawing or diagram accurately depicted. And I guess the only comment I have here is it would be helpful to say the board, these these entities, these officials or board could specify by regulation that this is required for all applications or could decide on a case by case basis whether this is required. And I think that if if it's the latter, then there should be some time threshold. In other words, somebody shouldn't get to the zoning board. And then the zoning board says, oops, I think we need to have a properly scaled drawing. And then that puts it off for for a meeting or two. So I think that this should either say that that this is going to apply to all applications or all applications over a certain threshold or that there should be some advanced warning to the applicant. So the applicant doesn't get to the zoning board and find out that they they can't be heard because the board needs to have a scale drawing. So those are, those are the big items that I have. Again, there were many others that I I've already provided to Andy and Jennifer and look forward to the next draft. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Any other planning board members? Would you like to speak at this time? All right, I'll hand it over to Counselor Shand.
Andy, when will we be seeing the updates that you've gotten comments on or or any of the comments from the planning board, for that matter?
Sure, thanks. Going off of what we have right now and obviously tonight's comments as well, which we appreciate. And again, some of those comments, Rick, it may be it got over Jennifer and I before the meeting. But yeah, with all the feedback we have today, just when there isn't some major substantive comments that come in in future weeks, we could, you know, take this on the 16th. Again, if you wanted to continue to a date where the planning board is is regularly meeting as we typically do with these. If you would want to continue a hearing to the 16th of June, and I'll defer the chair, Chair Sontag, as to that agenda, but the 16th of June, that would be two weeks out. That would be tight, just to be clear. But I, we are obviously very interested in getting these updates, you know, put forward. So I'm happy to work aggressively to get some tweaks done and then circle back and clarify where we've made some adjustments and and then speak to if there's any comments at that point, any substance of issues that remain. But hopefully, we'll address all the comments that have been made with folks. The other alternative, I guess I would say, is July 7th. That's the following planning board meeting. And again, I don't know if, I know Council Argument is not here. I don't know if Jennifer wanted to speak to timeframe, but it's sort of a balancing act. I certainly would love to get this back out to you in two weeks. But also, if you want to continue the 7th of July, it's understandable that folks might want, you know, more time to review and so forth. So it's a little tight to do it in two weeks, but.
I would agree on that schedule, especially with, you know, we still have budget hearings going on, so.
Right.
Um, I see Counselor Wallace has her hand up.
Hi, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I was just going to comment on that. Yeah, we, the council is really booked for the rest of June. So I think, you know, it might be better to take the time and get it right than to rush it through. And also, it would be helpful if if there are a certain amount of written comments, if if those could be sent around, you know, to our committee or however you might want to do that. And also, Chair Shand, we may want to get the word out to other counselors that they could provide comments in writing, similar to what Counselor Z did. I don't know, we can mention that at the next meeting or I don't know if we want to send an email, that sort of thing. But just make sure everybody kind of gets their input if they want to.
Good point. I will certainly reach out to them and we have Counselor Z's comments to take into consideration the next time we discuss this. Jennifer.
I guess I'll just chime in. Despite my desire to get this thing moving and clarified, I do think it's really important to, I'm just seeing Counselor Z's comments for the first time this afternoon. And like you've suggested, Counsel Wallace, it would be good to at least offer it to get written comments from the rest of the council members. And, you know, any any additional comments that planning board members might have. So I'm, although I want to move move ahead, I definitely support the one meeting delay.
Works for me, too.
Counselor, if I could note, we will, to the Counselor Wallace's comment, we will endeavor to put the comments that we're receiving to the website with the zoning amendment. That way, you can all go to one place to find the the comments we're getting on the amendment. You know, for instance, the comments that Member Tainter had given us or Counselor Z. We'll have those posted. That way, folks can see that. And that way, when you get the revised version back, you might have some of that for context. Or if you're giving your own comments, you can keep those existing comments or previously issued comments in mind.
Great.
Thank you.
That would be fantastic. And then I assume you would just update those as new ones come in.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, given that, I don't think we need to have public comment again, since we're probably going to move this to the next meeting. I would take a motion, Counselor Wallace, to continue this to July the 7th. Does that work for?
Could I make a note? Although I don't know exactly what things will be at that point as far as remote meetings, hybrid meetings or physical meetings. I would suggest for the date and time certain, the location certain, that we meet either on Zoom as we're doing now or as we've noted before, we would continue this to the City Hall Auditorium or Senior Center. But folks should look to the city's website to confirm. My guess is we might still be on Zoom at that point, but but look to the city's website for the location.
I agree with you on that one. We can go, we can determine by July 7th which way we want to go. I guess we don't have to decide tonight on that, correct, Andy?
That's correct. And that's why I wanted to note for anybody who's there that the continuance, if you're looking for the location for that date, please check the city's website. We're adapting as technologies available and and the pandemic is in the right location. So but look to the website and we'll confirm July 7th again. Right now, I'm assuming it'll be Zoom, but just check there again.
And we can also do the hybrid that's currently being done as well.
Correct, right.
Okay. Um, Counselor Wallace, do you agree?
Yes. So moved.
All right, so all those in favor of continuing the public hearing until July the 7th to a place to be determined and a mode media to be determined, say hi. Thank you. All right, so as far as the Planning and Development Committee goes, I think we can adjourn.
Before you adjourn, may I say something?
Certainly, Bonnie. I'm sorry.
Reiterate, I want to emphasize that this is probably not going to be finished at the next meeting either, that it's going to be open for further review, because we'll be taking new comments and having quite a bit of open discussion if Counselor Z's comments are any indication of what other counselors may be offering for comment. So I just want to set everybody's expectations that that meeting may not be the final one on this issue.
Okay. Fair point.
So you want to adjourn your meeting and we'll, would you like me to, let me continue this as well for the planning board before? So motion to continue this public hearing according to language that Counselor Shand already proposed for the planning board. May I have a motion?
So moved, Alden.
Thank you, Alden, second. We can start about MJ. Thank you, and I'll call roll. Holden Clark.
Yes.
Anne Gardner. Rick Tainter.
Yes.
Who else is here? MJ Verde.
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. So.
All right.
We'll see you then.
All right, so Counselor Wallace, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor, roll call. Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Shand, yes. All right. Chair Sontag, everyone else, enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You as well.
All right. Moving on to other business, we have a request for a minor modification at One Boston Way. Do we have anyone from? Who is going to be presenting this, Andy?
I don't believe we have anyone here from Mingo this evening. I think they were hoping that the modification was minor enough that not to be of particular concern to the board.
Well, good luck with that. Okay, you want to present it?
Sure, let me, sorry, hang on just one second here.
Assumptions make a you-know-what of you and me. So I'll just leave it at that, even though it was recorded.
Sorry, so, sorry about that. My computer is having a little bit of snag. So the original permit for One Boston Way, this is the project, obviously, that's wrapping up there over by the train station for those board members who weren't here at the time this project was approved. There, so that that project had a more lengthy set of conditions, a little more complicated, similar to, say, the Evergreen project, where there was a lot of different issues needed to be addressed at initial permitting. So one of the things that they've asked for is a change for the extension of the timeframe that they're allowed to provide an ASB plan. And they're asking for the final occupancy permit or July 31st, 2021, whichever is later. And that was just to make an adjustment, because the original language said completion of the project. And they just wanted to to ask for that. They've been good about asking for modifications in advance as opposed to. And they just wanted to to ask for that. They've been good about asking for modifications in advance as opposed to after the fact that they've run into some sort of issue. So we have no objection to that whatsoever. And they've been pretty responsive to the conditions they need to comply with. So we have no objection to that request. The other special condition that they requested a change to, which is number 12, was the completion of the work on Boston Way. In that particular scenario, they were expected to complete the paving of of Boston Way at the completion of their their building there. But however, as we all know, they also got a permit for construction at Three Boston Way. And it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to have them pave that and then, you know, cause potential damage to it while doing construction at Three Boston Way. Given the recent paving that the MBT had done, they'd asked that that maybe allowed to do that at the completion of construction of Three Boston Way, which again, the office takes no issue with, given the context. So with that, we defer to the board as to whether or not you want to approve the the two requested changes.
I'll take comments from board members now. Would anyone like to speak? Rick?
I have two, I think they're minor concerns, but I'll just raise them. One is that the, I'm just thinking over to Evergreen Commons and thinking about the fact of having only having one occupancy permit to guarantee completion conditions. And I don't know how, I don't know what that means for this project is is a is an occupancy is is will one occupancy permit cover all of the units or are the units going to be the individual units in the property going to be under individual occupancy permits? And if that's so, would this mean there could be one apartment that's isn't completed for a long time and this could go on forever? I guess so. That's that's just one one question. I feel more comfortable, I would feel comfortable if if the condition represented a significant commitment by the developer. And then related to that.
Rick, could I pause you for a second and just suggest it?
Just a second before, let me just complete that. The other part, so I've got comments on both points, but the first, the other, the other part of the July 31, 2021, whichever is later. So is that, does this mean that a final occupancy permit could drag on for months? I guess that's that's the first question. So you could respond to that one. And then I got the other question afterwards.
Oh, sure. Thanks. I saw Jennifer raising her hand. I think zoning administrator, she might want to speak to the timing of the occupancy and its breakdown of the building.
Yes. So just to speak to how the occupancy permits worked for Boston, the the first phase, assuming they will seek something similar for the second. They did get initial occupancy for some of the public spaces and initial units. And then each unit after that did need to be maybe not in each unit individually, but each section received subsequent occupancy permits. To that end, I think you are correct to maybe suggest something like initial occupancy permit or the first occupancy permit for the new structure and and not put it off until the final occupancy permit.
You could also put perhaps instead of whichever is later, but in no event, you know, not not later than the July 31st, right? Would that be?
That would be, that would be great. I would be very happy with that. So the other question that I had was relating to paving of Boston Way. So this makes total sense. I'm just wondering whether the the modification should shift the responsibility for paving of Boston Way from from One Boston Way to Three Boston Way, rather than have, you know, a year or so down the line, have One Boston Way be responsible for paving part of the road. And at the same time, Three Boston Way be responsible for paving the rest of the road.
Sure. Could I, could I speak to that one?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a reasonable, these are both, you know, reasonable, responsible questions and concerns. In that case, you know, Minko not being here this evening, I don't see them in our attendees list, but if there was a question or concern on that end, we could, if the board was not inclined to approve that tonight, we could circle back and have a discussion with them, but perhaps mechanically, I think, as you know, this is in your professional work, the proper way to deal with that probably would be for them to then request a modification to the Three Boston Way permit, thereby tying that paving work to that project as opposed to One Boston Way, to address your concern, so that, you know, essentially resulting in the same effect, but in this case tying it to Three Boston Way. But I'll leave it to you as to whether or not you want to approve it tonight in this way versus continue the matter and go back to Minko to request a formal modification for Three Boston Way.
And I don't think that however we go is going to slow them down. You know, especially if we have a deadline of July 31st for for the first part. So I think it, I don't know whether this, whether my concerns are serious enough concerns that everybody else agrees with them, or whether we can, whether you all feel comfortable about going the way these have been requested. If so, I'd be happy to step back. But if if other people feel like there's a concern here, then I would suggest that we could, we could put it off until the first July meeting.
Would anyone else like to speak to that? I'm I'm with Rick. I'd like to see it noted maybe in two places here and then in the in the Three Boston Way decision as well. And for that reason, if no other, we should delay it so we can make sure the applicant agrees. But I had another question, and I was just wondering if if completion of construction of Three Boston Way, that added language is good enough? Or should we say something about before issuance of the final occupancy permit for Three Boston Way? Again, learning from our prior experiences, that occupant, that final occupancy permit seems to give us some very clear leverage.
Was that a question of you, Jennifer?
I want to know if we should add before issuance of final occupancy permit for Three Boston Way in place of completion of construction of.
That's what I was actually speaking to. I apologize if that wasn't clear. That's the one that I think really needs clarification and not final occupancy permit. Yeah, I think there's no reason the heavy construction is done before you give the initial occupancy permit. So I think we should require it before they are granted occupancy of Three Boston Way.
Ah, before issuance of first occupancy. Oh, I see what you mean. Yeah, you combined that with your other comment, and I thought somehow it had to do with the general condition.
Sounds good.
So let's, with these two issues, let's let's hold off on approving the paving of Boston Way. And go with the as-built plans with the new language, final occupancy permit or no later than July 31, 2021, is what I understood.
And in no event, no, in any event, no later than July 31, 2021.
Yeah. Okay, so that that would be the motion to change that language. And the the motion is just to approve change for general condition number six. Could I have a motion to that effect?
I'll move that.
Okay, Rick, and a second?
Second, yeah.
Thank you, Anne. You sound like you're underwater, but I, you sound like you're also breathing, so I'm not going to worry about you. Okay, we'll take a roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. And we will request the applicant come back to discuss condition number 12. We could bring them back. It's so such a short thing. Let's bring them back on the 16th. I'll make an exception to what I've been saying for months now. We will allow just this one application on that night when we're supposed to be focusing on planning.
But we're we're asking for modifications to both conditions, both one and three, correct? To add, to add the paving of the road.
Yeah, if I if I could, my suggestion is per your feedback tonight on this, that we circle back with a draft certificate. It's okay, we could send out a draft certificate based on this for the next meeting. We would confer with Minko just to confirm that they understand there's no dispute over that, you know, the terms are if they want to win or attend the meeting, but we would send that certificate to you for the next meeting. So you could keep that in mind and then reference that.
Yeah. Okay. Do we need to take any more votes on this?
No, thank you. We will carry this on the next agenda accordingly.
Okay, I just don't want to mess you up. All right, that's all the business we have on our approval of minutes for 21 minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second, Alden.
Okay, any any discussion? I'll take a roll call then on approval of the minutes for 421. Alden?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes.
Oh, actually, I don't think I was there.
Whoops. Okay, MJ abstains. And Linda, could you please check that when you do go through it? Thanks. Minutes for May 5. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved, Rick.
Thank you, Rick. A second?
I'll second, Alden.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'll take roll call for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Anne?
Obstain, I was not there.
Thank you. Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Now, the 519 minutes were for the executive session. We don't have them yet. And so when we have them, we will have to go into an executive session to approve them, and we'll manage that whenever we get them.
Is
Yes.
Is that the executive session or is that the the next, the second May meeting?
Oh.
It's not the executive session.
The second May meeting.
It's the second May meeting.
It's the second May meeting, and we don't have the executive session either. So we're missing two.
Right. So on the on the last meeting in May, they're done. I just need to read them through. I thought it would be rude to send them out right before the meeting. You'll have them later tonight, probably. And Andy made a suggestion. I don't know, Andy, if you want to explain.
Yeah, rather than bore everybody with the minutia, long story short, we, the Clerk's Office has minutes drafted for that meeting, and so we'll be conferring on the recording in the the minutes of that, so that'll speed that up for your next meeting. You'll be able to have those to review. Just as a reminder, executive session minutes, if they're being reviewed and approved, should be done in executive session. So we would add an executive session to that future meeting just to to review those minutes and approve them.
Okay, good. So we'll use, we'll basically use his minutes.
Right.
Perfect. All right. So the next item on the agenda is the planning updates. I just wanted to remind everybody, and I'm sure Caitlin will have it in the staff report, that we will be reviewing zoning rewrite sections on parking, site plan review, and a separate section on administration. And that those links have already been sent to us, but they'll be sent to us again, as I mentioned, by Kate. If you need them sooner than she normally sends out the staff report, please ask for them from anybody who might have the link. And I'm just going to encourage you to to do some homework and make some notes. I this is a planning meeting that we had, we've changed the agenda, but we've had it on on our schedule for six months. It's experiment to see how we do with an only planning meeting, which we've just changed slightly with one, one minor modification application. So we'll see how it goes. But it's probably similar, but probably also more interesting than what we did the last time with Andy. Sorry, Andy, had no reflection on you, just.
I'm staying.
Housekeeping issues are not so exciting, though there are some substantive things in there that are are beginning to raise some issues, certainly for one of the counselors. But this one for the 16th, I think, is stuff that we've struggled with, that we know about, parking, site plan review. It's our experience and we're the ones that have to live with the consequences. So if that doesn't make it sound important, I don't know what else I can say.
Could I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
One is, this is for Andy and whoever was on the the committee that worked on this. So the parking section has some significant substantive changes from the existing ordinance, including simplifies the the parking table, combines uses and and so forth. And so I guess my question is, have has there already been a an assumption that this is the direction that you're going to go? And therefore, any comments that we make should not dig too too deeply into the table, or should I guess, to put it another way, should we assume that this revised parking table is the table we're going to be working with? And if we're comfortable with it, we we ignore it and assume that that's going forward?
When you, when you say that one, you mean the one that was drafted by with Community Opportunities Group and the zoning advisory committee?
Yeah, the one that you sent us the links to, the section nine. So I understand we're not following that.
Yeah, no, I would wait for us to provide that updated draft to you. Because, well, one thing, and you might have touched upon this briefly with one of your comments a second ago. One of the issues we had that required a total change of approach is that the use that in our zoning ordinance, we break down uses in a certain way, and there's a parallel to that in the parking section and in the use definition section. So structurally, we we have to basically convert that draft from Community Opportunities Group that with the zoning advisory committee back into our own zoning ordinance structure a little bit to make sure that that jives with the same uses, use titles and so forth and in that organization. So I would, well, there'll be some similar parallel there. I would make the suggestion that you take a little updated version of that that we're going to send out rather than looking at that particular one right this second, but that's just my suggestion. We're happy to take feedback on that draft as it might help us to speed up getting your concerns addressed in the updated version.
Well, I guess, I guess my question that is, what are what are we being asked to comment on for the next meeting? Because I was thinking that we were going to be moving from the work that was done in this this draft from April of 2019 and seeing, you know, making comments on that, understanding that you're going to be using the existing structure of the ordinance. But if you're, are you saying that you're going to be updating this 419 draft, and we shouldn't do any discussion about this until we see that update or?
Well, no, I don't. I don't know that there's actually a conflict in schedules here, mainly because of my understanding of our last conversation about this was that you as board members would provide feedback on the standards, right, that you want to see imposed or that you need, you feel the need to be updated. And that we would, in this office, just to, you know, to to deal with the the other side of it, focus on making sure that it gets inserted in the right places and the proper language and so forth. And then again, with your background, we're more than happy to take anything you want to send us, but but what we were thinking to make it more efficient for the board members is that you focus on the substance of what you want, and then we insert it or, you know, make the markup accordingly in the existing, of course, structure or framework of the ordinance, as you as you noted. So I wasn't necessarily seeing it as a problem if if for the board members, for yourself and others to continue working and then forwarding us any thoughts you have or sharing in a meeting. Any thoughts you have on what those standards should be. But I get my reading of that was that your focus was going to be on what you want to see as a requirement to the standards, and then we would focus on the inserting those in the right places or or, you know, providing you a draft to take a look at.
Okay. This, I actually have three questions. The second question is it's hard to say this without actually saying what I'm going to say. This whole intermodal transportation improvement fund stuff and the and the special permit for recognizing parking, public parking within 300 feet. Is that sacrosanct or could we make, would you be open to making alternative suggestions for that?
I am always open to. I, I am always open to suggestions and debates about what's in the, you know, the public interest as far as the city's regulations. You know, I defer to others and counselors that might have been involved with the original ordinance or amendments to it, you know, in recent years. But I, but I am more than happy to consider amendments to things that might be improvements over the existing regulatory structure.
And then the final question is, and I don't, you know, this is, this is like an open meeting law kind of question, I guess. If I were to provide, or if anybody in the board were to provide some comments, would it be helpful to provide them in advance and have them distributed to board members, or would you rather not do that and really have them just raised at the meeting on the 16th?
Yeah, that's a great question. Yeah, that'd be helpful. And again, I know you've given us some, some initial comments we went over. If you're able to give us, if you want to give us, you know, any kind of clean markup version, or whatever you want to do with that, we're happy to post those, like I said earlier this evening, post comments we're getting on something like this to the city website, so that you and the general public and everyone else can see what those particular comments are prior to the meeting, at which point you could summarize and reiterate those. But that, what that would ensure is the transparency of, of, of any of your comments, you know, while we're waiting for the meeting to arrive, and then that would make the meeting of, of course, more productive for everybody. So we could, we might be able to have some of those things addressed or ready to be addressed at the meeting, as opposed to following up after the meeting again, so.
Great, thank you.
Sure. And we appreciate that, the feedback and the suggestions. It's very helpful to us. We, you know, none of us, we can anticipate all scenarios that happen, right? So it's helpful to have, you know, someone say, what about this scenario?
So listening to this exchange, I'm thinking, Andy and Jennifer, it would be really helpful to all of us if you could provide us some instructions in writing for how to prepare for this discussion of the zoning rewrite sections on the 16th, and that you do that before the staff report usually comes out. Could you do that by the early part of next week?
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do that this week.
Yeah, I think you have different expectations than some of us might have. And I know you've said it in the past, this idea of looking at standards and the substantive issues that we really want to see addressed. But it's hard to stay out of the weeds if we're just looking at the output of the ZAC, the committee. So your instructions would, both from both of you, would really help us at least in our thinking, if not in our actual written preparation. I don't promise that all of us will be as, what's the word, conscientious as Rick is, but I know he thinks better on his, on the screen and, and than some of us. So however people want to prepare, I think this would be really good guidance for all of us sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Yeah, and you know, this is obviously one of the difficult things about updating not just sections of the ordinance, but the whole ordinance is the more so-called cooks in the kitchen, which is important because we often work together to come up with something that covers as many issues as possible that might arise. The more cooks there are in the kitchen, and the more different drafts there are, the more time it takes to resolve those issues, right, and make sure everything's on the same page. So, so that's important. We want to do that for sure, but that obviously sometimes adds time to, to get to a resolution where we're going to agree on language. So we'll all send something out this week on that, and, and definitely appreciate any suggestions you have, and whether you want to work off of the Community Opportunities Group one, you know, to be clear, or you want to work off the existing ordinance to give us your thoughts. We're happy to take in different formats. We realize it's, the bullet list might be worked better for someone via email versus a markup version of the document might work better for someone else. We're happy to take in different formats. Just keep in mind that as we get feedback from multiple sources, you know, whether it's a phone call, an email, different drafts, bullet lists, that takes time for us to incorporate and reconcile sometimes differences of opinion and so forth in language. So that's, that is unfortunately for us, what sometimes takes longer about these projects is that that, you know, there is so much feedback coming from different places that it can't all be resolved in a single meeting.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, the whole idea is, this is, like I said with the previous, with the joint public hearing, this is going to be iterative as well, but at least when this is the way we want it, that we can then present it and get feedback, and we're not falling over ourselves trying to make changes while we're listening to the counselors and the public. So I like this process. I think it's going to work. It won't be overnight, but if we get all started on the same, the same set of instructions and the same orientation, then we're more likely to be productive, especially at our first meeting. So that's good. Also, MJ and Ann happen to be the two people that have sat at different times on the ZAC. So do either of you have any comments in terms of context, or, you know, how, how we got here for Alden and Rick to sort of give them some background from your experience?
Well, I actually didn't sit on that committee for very long, so I don't think I really have much to offer.
Okay.
I mean, I was on it for a number of months, and you know, I felt like we, we pretty well vetted things with between Andy and the moderator. I can't remember her name. But no, I don't have anything in addition to what, I feel like we went through things pretty well. I mean, it was great to have Jared there and Azonya, you know, Jennifer and everyone else. So I don't think I have anything more to add.
Yeah, I guess that, that would reinforce what you just said, is that, you know, I think it relates to something that, that Rick asked early on, or I thought I heard him say, is that this didn't come just out of the consultant's head. He spent hours on most of this stuff. And there was a lot of back and forth. So while we don't have details on each of the issues that's, you know, each of the sections, because our memory just doesn't go way back there, what you're looking at is the result of a somewhat broad base of input from the zoning. We had somebody from the zoning board.
Those were there, yeah. That was really helpful.
We had a Froze as well as Jared. They have had other counselors at other times. And yeah, I don't know that we had anybody outside. I'm trying to think if John Eric ever came in, but, you know, there was a lot of discussion, so it's not, you know.
Out of the blue, yeah.
Out of the blue, exactly. Yeah. But it's been sitting there for a while. A lot of things have happened since then that kind of puts perspective on it. Maybe some of the issues are even hotter now than they were then. And so it'll be good to, to review them with a fresh set of eyes, whether it's the existing ordinance or looking at the rewrite version or both. Jennifer, did you want to add to that?
I might just offer to Rick and anyone else who might be looking at this in, in more detail, but Rick, you've picked up on the conflict of the fact that this was a brand new draft that has brand new uses in the parking table. And if, if you wanted to discuss any of, any of that and, and sort of say, okay, what did this new use encompass? Because sometimes we merge them. I can certainly make myself available because I did sit on that Zach for, you know, a good chunk of time. And the process we will have to go back through to, to put this, the new proposed parking table back into the old format, that those, the questions you're asking will be very important for us to consider. So I, I, I see the problem you're pointing out, and I, I definitely welcome the, the feedback and the conversation to help clarify it for all of us.
Yeah, I would add, that's exactly where the, the work that we had done with Community Opportunities Group, sorry, hit a wall because we had, we had all been working on a draft of a document in cohesively that was supposed to be cross-referencing other sections, of course, and it was all with the new chapter structure, with the new use, you know, tables and definitions and sort of jiving. And when the, when the effort, the decision was essentially made to, to abandon the overall or entire rewrite of the ordinance in one adoption by the council, that meant going, and then it was desire, at least on the council, from some counselors, to stay with the existing structure of the ordinance. We had to then not use those documents, those versions, and go back and rewrite those to fit in the existing structure. So again, that's part of the, the issue we have.
Okay. Any other updates from anybody? Are we ready for a motion to adjourn?
We are. So moved.
Thank you, Rick. Second?
I'll second, Alden.
Okay, thank you, Alden. I'll take roll for approval. Alden?
Yes.
Ann? Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. We are officially adjourned.
Good night, everyone.